Probably gonna have to do the pledge allegiance here in a second.
Are you ready, Mr. Scott?
Just trying to get somebody connected.
We got 5:30. Let's aim for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
You see the agenda?
Jenny David.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbacker.
Karen, you see the agenda?
Mark Cerber.
Present.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners?
Um, I have a couple of things I want to talk about under ARPA.
Okay.
And I want to talk to you about the airport manager and healthcare.
So where would that, where would you like that?
Any place.
Ah, you would like airport manager under discussion items?
That's fine.
And then what was the second one?
I have a couple of ARPA requests.
Right, but you said something else as well.
No, two different ARPA requests through two different departments.
So then let's put the under three underneath C.
You were talking ARPA anyway.
Great. So you got the airport manager, I, and Commissioner Scott, 3C. Anything else? Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioners?
No.
Item two, public comment. This is the first of two public comments. This is agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments. Item 3A, we have Kelsey Killinger from My Michigan Health Community Health Supervisor related to meeting room use. Come on up.
Yeah.
Hi. Have a seat. There's something we can help you with, Commissioner Scott?
Township supervisor to hook into zone.
Can Tom speak with her?
Yes, Tom.
He's not here.
One sec.
I apologize.
Okay.
We've got a lot on the agenda, so.
Anyway, you should be able to see board packet on the, on the main thing. And once you get to that point, then you can see on the agenda, the connection.
Make sure you have our full attention.
No, you gotta look down the agenda to find the connection. All right. You bet. All right. She runs all the township.
You have, you have the floor.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kelsey Killinger. I am the Community Health Supervisor for My Michigan Health Medical Centers, West Branch and Gladwin. I'm here tonight in hopes to get approval to use the Oglema County Annex Building Conference Room for a two-day Living with Parkinson's educational series. What this event is, is we partnered with Michigan Parkinson's Foundation and Michigan Medicine to bring a couple providers here to present on a different topics within Parkinson's disease. And then the second day would be occupational, physical, and speech therapists from My Michigan Health presenting to the community. We would invite no more than 24 participants in person to this event. The event will be held on April 13th and 14th of this year. Times for the event would be 11:00 AM till 3:00 PM. And then hoping to use the room probably from 10:00 AM till 4:00 PM just for setup and tear down. And then I think I hit all of my major points. If there are any lingering questions about them, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Vaughn?
I think Commissioner Vaughn's looking, looking at his 911.
I'm just looking at the problem.
Yeah. Usually it's the 911 director and/or MSU that has the planning book over there.
Yep, and I've been in contact with MSU Extension and they have nothing on their calendars for that date.
Who manages, who manages the, the calendar for that room?
That's why I say either it's between 911 Director and MSU.
MSU Extension does?
Together, they, they work together on.
Yeah, 13th, 13th will be 911.
What time?
5:30 or so.
Yeah, 5:30.
So that should be fine. Tim, did you have anything?
Well, the reason I asked for Kelsey to come here to talk to you is we don't have any direction in terms of policy on how to accommodate the outside organizations coming in to use the room. I think this is perfectly legitimate use for the room, don't get me wrong. But we don't have any authority at the staff level to say that's okay. What I do suggest is that in light of this, that we develop a, a policy that won't be all that complicated that just says for outside organizations that want to use the building, here are the rules. In, in, Kelsey, one of the big points right on the shoot here is that, you know, the setup and the teardown. So, you know, if there's going to be some additional work on our people to do that, then, you know, we need to make sure that we've got all that arranged. Commonly what happens in a policy like that, if the board were interested in charging a fee for that service, usually it's nominal, that would be incorporated in the policy. I'm not suggesting that you necessarily do that, but that's an option to do it. But among the other rules is, you know, we make sure that the users of the, of the room make sure that it's left in, you know, clean and it's not, you know, trashed or anything like this. And usually if there is a fee, then that fee is returned if the room is in good shape when they leave. Otherwise, it's applied to whatever needs to happen to put it back in order. And then also will spell out, you know, any liability concerns, who's responsible. This is a more formal way of going about doing it. So I'd suggest in the future, you know, that we, we take on that task of preparing that policy. But in the meantime, I think this is a great use for the building. And oddly enough, it's available because you have to meet on a Tuesday that week. So they can actually have it on Thursday and there's no conflict with the AV equipment that needs to be taken over there. So anyway, just a little side bit of irony about all this scheduling.
Commissioner Cerber.
I'm definitely in favor of them using it. And I think we do need to develop a policy.
Commissioner Scott?
Another thing that we're lacking, lots of policies, but anything. We could echo.
Sure. I don't think there's a, there's a problem mark.
What time, what time you done?
Um.
Wednesday.
Technically, we should be done presenting around 2:00, but we were leaving that hour for questions at the end for the participants.
Yeah, like I say, we just use the back table. We don't even use the.
There's plenty of time there. You're saying 5:30, there should be an issue.
5:30, so yeah.
There's not an issue at all, but you'll have a policy drafted by then, correct?
Yeah, well, as long as the board is okay with that, I mean, we'll just go ahead and ever sign up and secure it. And then once the policy is adopted, we'll have a little bit better procedure. So you wouldn't have to come to a meeting.
Is there a calendar that the extension can put in where, where, like, you could view it as well if you have a phone call for availability for this room?
That sounds like a job for Mary. Yes.
Never.
We'll just set ourselves up on a common drive or something so we can all see it. And then frankly, we could, in these rooms, I mean, we could put it out there and then we don't have to bother other people.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be super helpful.
Right?
Everybody's on the same page.
Holy moly.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 3B, Randy Booth, Equalization Director, related to cost of service options. Randy, come on up. Hi.
You can, it'll be the next thing. I sent to everyone kind of a, ahead of time, a letter, a copy of like Ross Common County, and I think another county, what they do for service contracts. And we charge all local units a fee for per parcel fee to handle the PREs, all the clerical work that we do for the local units and preparing assessment rolls of tax bills and whatnot. We've never had a formal contract with them. It's just been in place, at least since 1994, they've been charging for those services. Townships just paid it. We really never had an issue with it. But more and more of the counties have a contract that they use to, so you can spell out what they're providing. What I like about the Ross Common County one is they have different levels of service. Local units can do some of the things. The townships now that is printing their own tax bills and printing their assessment change notices, so we don't have to do that. So they, you know, whether they get a reduction in fees. Right now, we don't have anything in place. It's just, they all pay us X amount, and that's the way it is. And to be fair, if we're not doing those chores, it should maybe be a lesser fee. And so for that, what I'm asking the board is permission to maybe contact Tim Perone or attorney and see if he can draft us a policy or a, an agreement that the local units in the county can agree on moving forward. And because it's, I mean, it's, it's about $70,000 a year for departments. So it's a significant amount of money. And it's just, uh, just, I don't even know that there's a handshake. It's just started in, in 1994, when they started doing principal residence forms. John Ari came to the township, said, look, this is gonna be a lot to keep track of this. And at that point, the county decided to start charging the local units for some of those services.
But they're not paying for it 100%.
No, I mean, our department budget's much more, I mean, but it's, this covers a lot of the costs of doing some of those things that we do for the townships. Most of these things that are listed on this, we're not required to do as part of equalization. We do it for the local units, but we don't have to.
Right.
So it's a service to them.
For a lot cheaper than they had to do it. If they had to do it, it would cost more.
Yeah, even mailing out the assessment change notices. So the print files, if we send out 20,000 copies, it's all based on bulk mailing and it's a lot cheaper per parcel. If you're sending one unit with 1,000 parcels, it's quite a bit more per parcel to send it out and have it mailed out.
You're gonna.
They're not, we're, we're tipping in on the price of it. We don't have to do it.
Well, the mailing, the, any of the mailing and the prep work for that, they're covering the cost, the actual cost of sending out the notices. But the prep work that we do for it is covered under this contract. We do that for them.
So Randy, what exactly are you looking for from us?
Permission to contact the attorney and have a contract or an agreement drawn up that we can meet with the local units and have a formal agreement that we use.
Is there an issue with this, Tim?
I know, I encourage that that happen.
So we'll need a resolution for that? Or just, can we just?
Just give him the okay now. We're on that retainer, so.
Commissioner Cerber. So we're on a retainer.
I've just given my blessing.
Is that a verbal?
It's verbal.
So we're on a retainer, so this will not cost us, should not cost us from the attorney, correct?
We, we no extra cost for that, right?
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
We'll make sure we cover all our costs. They pay for all, all the costs it takes us to do their job.
Who's that?
The township.
There's no real contract. Well, well, I don't, I don't.
Not in the, I'm not in the business to make money, but I'm in the business of covering my costs.
We'd have to review and try and analyze how to exactly, what is our statutory duties and what are we doing for them at cost? And, and so that will take some other work to, to figure out.
Well, that's, attorney might have an idea.
We already have. At this point, we have a fee schedule in place for this year. I sent out a couple of years ago because we increased the fees to help pay for some of the upgrades to GIS and whatnot. And so it's something we could review for the 2023 year moving forward because I just gave them the increase for the 21 and 22 years back in like 2020.
Well, it doesn't bother me if they, they, they walk at our price and want to do it on their own.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that.
Is that something that's feasible, where they could do it on their own?
Yeah, every unit can. A township is doing theirs on their own right now.
There you go.
So what will that do? What will that do for your department if they choose to do it on their own?
Uh, we wouldn't have to prepare their tax bills or their assessment change notices. We just review the data from the assessor and do our studies that we would normally do.
Do you foresee them wanting to do that?
I don't think most of the other townships want to take that on.
I don't disagree, but it was a question. Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to overcharge them by no means. They're not overflowing with funds neither. They're not much.
No, I wanted to be a fair agreement. I mean, when I, when I sent the letter on 2020 and said, look, we'd like to increase this, I looked at the other counties. And, and what we're charging this year is $2 per parcel. The other counties are charging $2 to $4 a parcel in our area for the same type of service. So I think we're reasonable with what we're charging for that. We had been, it had been the same fee. And I look back, John Ari had recommended to raise the fee like in 2003 or '04. The board chose not to increase the fee on the local units. We've had the same fee since about 97 or 98.
Oh, more than 25 years now? We've had the same.
I can't go back and see how far back, but I know in 2003, he thought they should have increased it to $2 a parcel at that time. And the board took no action, so the fee was the same until, like I say, I, I sent him a letter and we did increase the fee the last two years. Primarily, and part of that was because of the GIS upgrades, the amount of money the county was spending to upgrade our GIS system, which they use quite a bit.
They don't have to update GIS and all that stuff?
No, and that's why in this, in, in the letter that I sent them, part of their fee every year that they pay is to help keep the GIS updated from this point forward, forward.
But it's also one of the services that we provide.
Yes.
At accounting level. So we also can't forget that.
But we don't have to. This is just something that's been, this is one of these things, it's always been done.
Most counties provide a.
Always been done.
Most counties provide a service, serviceable level of GIS. We do not. We are very deficient in our GIS system. It's one of the reasons in the ARPA proposal that I've got is for GIS upgrades moving forward. Our, our GIS has no information on subdivision lots, which there's thousands of them in the county. And so if people do searches or continually calling our offices for information because they can't find it in line, we have title searches that come in to run copies of maps because the information isn't available online.
Okay, so because you're asking for ARPA funds to do that, the, the reason why we don't have this GIS is money.
Yes.
We can't afford it. And we've been doing the same thing for 25 years with just a couple of small increases in the last couple of years. Let's get somebody else helping us out.
And, and, and I'll back up. The letter that I sent to the townships two years ago, part of that increase, they're, they're going to be paying 50 cents per parcel annually for GIS services. That will bring in about $12,000 a year to maintain our system. To, they've upgraded the services. Now, we don't have to buy a new server and a new computer in the program. It's about $5,000 a year to host it. They can make the changes for about $5 a parcel. The cost has come down substantially. So the townships will be sharing that cost to update the information annually, which will be a big help. When they put the GIS in place in the mid to late 90s, they never included anything to update. The Equalization Department never had anything in a budget to update GIS, and they never asked the townships for any funding to keep it updated. The townships were part of the grant that got the GIS established, but at that point, it was never updated. I mean, for 20 years. And so it's pretty outdated.
Okay, so you'll put, you'll, you have our permission to speak with the attorney and you'll come back with more information?
Thank you.
Okay.
The other second part of that was also land divisions. Again, in 1997, when land division law changed, John Ari started doing land divisions. And so we do them, but, and the way the statute reads is communities under 25,000 people can by agreement have the county do land divisions, do the approval process. We have no agreement. We have no, uh, we've been doing it, but to be honest, I get some flacks from, from some real estate people and even a couple of township supervisors that we require certain things for the approval process. And we, I don't have an ordinance to go off of. The county's never adopted an ordinance. And we don't have an agreement in place from any of the townships that says that we're doing this. This department just took it on and started doing it in 1997. And it makes sense because of county zoning, we also verify that they meet our zoning plan and whatnot when we do an approval. So what I'm asking the board is to also have Tim draft an agreement so that the county can continue to do land divisions for the local units.
We just, we have been doing it. We just don't have an agreement to do it?
Correct.
Are we charging for that service?
We charge the people that come in $165 fee for the land division. We don't charge the townships for doing it for them.
So I guess we, we charge the people, but you don't?
I'm sorry.
Please. So we charge the people, we don't charge the townships?
Correct.
I guess that makes sense. So you're charging the individual?
Yes.
So you're just looking for a contract when that person comes in, sign the contract, pay your money?
What we're looking for is a contract with the local units that they've adopted a resolution, says Oglema County can do the land divisions for them and are responsible to do that for them.
So you're trying to take it out of your department and put it back on the townships?
No, no.
You lost me somewhere.
Right now, we don't have an agreement in place. The law says that we can do it for the local units if we have a resolution agreement in place that says we can do it.
So you're just missing that resolution?
We've never had that.
Gonna continue doing the same thing? We just need the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
And, and I'd like to have Tim look at it because this should be part of, uh, when you look at most communities, it's part of land division, it's part of the zoning ordinance.
Is this something our attorney should look at as well, or is it?
Tim Perone is the attorney.
Oh, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I guess it's just a Tim Perone, not Tim.
Okay, so you need our permission there too. Any questions, Commissioner Scott?
We charge comparable price or comparable charge for land division.
We raised the fee a couple of years ago to $165. I know Oglema and Osco County where I live, our township charges $50 for land division fee. Greenwood Township charges $200. It all depends on local unit, but between $100 and $200 is pretty much the normal fee for land divisions.
We need to keep up the Greenwood.
Commissioner Cerber. Commissioner Vaughn.
We're good.
So this isn't something typically where we bring the public in? Is this a quick question? Because there is another area for public comment, but since Randy's here and I know he has to leave, are you gonna be here, Randy?
No, I have a township.
So go ahead and ask.
So question, would that be, you're talking about this land division, would that be for townships that only the county does their zoning, or would that be for townships that also do their own zoning?
Right now, we do them for all the townships except one. They've opted to do their own land divisions effective January 1 of this year.
That'll be an option for the townships.
Yep, they can do their own land divisions if they choose.
Thank you.
Do they know how to, to do that if they choose to?
Most no.
Have them call you? So we're good, you're.
They want to take it on a survey, I guess. I mean, I would, if they call it, probably helpful. It's not, it's not that difficult to us. I, I think we need to have a the resolution in place, but we actually can do it.
Perfect. Okay, are you good with us with that item?
Yes.
Okay, so next we have item C. Uh, wait, did I, no, we're good, right there, yeah. With Karen as well, treasure and Randy Booth, Equalization Director, related to tax capture districts.
Yeah. Give this to Tim really late today. I apologize. We've been busy.
I've got it.
Okay, you got it?
Yep.
I don't want to. All of the, uh, units and whatnot. So, but Karen and I reached out, we did talk to Tim Perone. We had a Zoom meeting with him and he reviewed some of the DDA statutes. One of the, one of the things that we've run into the last couple of years, the, the different townships capture different millages. And I kind of looked in it, I looked at the state and asked around, and I could never get a definitive answer on what they should be capturing, what shouldn't be captured, or what, how to do it. Karen had, when she settled with the township, she asked the same questions. She said, well, how do we, how do we know that you're capturing the right amounts? And we don't know. We just, previous practice has just been to accept what the townships have sent to the county. And so we did meet with Tim and he did review some of the DDA documents. And, uh, so we want to make sure that we're doing the capturing, that we're capturing the right millages that they're allowed to collect. One of the things in talking to Tim, new authorities that were not in place, they cannot collect millage for new authorities. So the 911 millage for the 911 center was captured and, uh, they, uh, they should not have been. So it's about $20,000 a year of their, of their money for the millage bonded or ballot issue that's going to the DDAs. And so this year, when Karen settles with the townships, they're not going to be able to capture that. We're, we're going to have a meeting with the township and city treasurers to let them know that that's not legal for them to capture. And, uh, the, the three DDAs, Oglema Township, West Branch Township and the city, all extended their TIF districts till 2045 last year. But they didn't put a new TIF plan in place in that ordinance. And so they said they're just using the old ones that were put in place in 2002, 2003. A lot of the new millages that have come up, we're not sure that they should be capturing all the millages that are in those plans. What we'd like to do is have permission for Tim to review this more thoroughly and make sure that, that the right amounts are being captured. Uh, any of the new ballot language and speaking to him should have had the phrase in there that some of that money is subject to capture by a DDA. We've not included that in any ballot language. I didn't know it was a requirement. And we've had the elections, people voted on it, assuming all that money is going to those entities that they voted on a millage for. And, uh, so I guess what we'd like to do is get your permission again to have Tim look into this a little deeper and look at the new plan and make sure that we're capturing the right amounts and, and to work with the local units to, so we're all on the same page on what we should be collecting and.
We have a proper settlement?
We have a proper settlement. So Karen could say, yes, this is what you should be giving us.
Most definitely.
And, and at this time, we really don't have that. The, we just haven't had that guidance previously.
I don't see any problem there. Tim, administrative Tim, you're the designated person to allow a department to use the attorney, right?
Right. In both cases here, with what Randy's put forward is you could just tell him, no, we don't want to get into this. So let's talk about the, the original, the fees that we were talking about. If you didn't want equalization to charge any fees whatsoever, there's no point in having the attorney review anything because we wouldn't do it. So what he's really doing here is presenting to you projects that he would like to take on. Yeah, we can go to the attorney. That's on retainer. That's not a problem to approve administratively. But things like tax capture, these tend to be subjects that can lead to some pretty spirited discussions. Sometimes, you know, the board may not want to venture into that area. Now, here, I think there's uniform agreement across the board that we need to get a handle on this, not just with the county, but with the tax capture districts as well. So if you were to say, no, we don't want you to look at that, we don't want you to spend any time on that, yeah, no purpose in going to the attorney. So really, we're looking at the subject matter itself. Is this something that you believe needs to be pursued?
What is this gonna benefit the county? I mean, there, obviously, there's probably going to be some, uh, what's the wording I'm looking here? The DDA's the one that's gonna suffer with this, correct? What would be the benefit of looking into this for, at the county level?
To, we can review the millages that, that we've levied, that people have voted for and make sure whether or not they should be captured. A, gives Karen a proper framework to settle that says, these are what should be captured, these should not. Uh, one of the small millages, the Soldier and Sailor's Relief Fund, Act 214, is not a voted millage. The commissioners do that by resolution. Should that be captured? Because it's not a voted millage, I don't know the subject to capture in that. It's a real small millage amount, but still, it's a specific thing that you're levying without a vote to provide those services for veterans. Should that be going to the DDA? And some of the townships have been, uh, they decided they, they don't want to take money from Veterans Administration or they don't want to take money from the D, uh, senior center. So they don't withhold that millage. But the way the DDA statute reads, they have to take all the millage. They can't pick and choose. Those that they're allowed to take, they need to take. And so they've been kind of picking and choosing the millages that they want to. So we just want it to be the right framework that those that are captured are captured. And once it's reviewed and we, and we look at the plans, if there's excess revenue that they're capturing, do they need to capture the full amount of the millage? They may not need to collect seven mills from the county if they only need five mills to operate and pay their bonded debt.
Well, that's their decision to make. If they are able, if they, if they're able to take up the seven mills and, and they choose to only take five, that's their decision. We don't make the decision how much we correct. We think they, they should get.
There's language in there that's for excess funds. Because they're using other tax monies. It's not their revenue. It's our revenue that they're using for these projects. So there is revenue in place for things like that. And that's, we just like to have a research to make sure that we're doing it properly.
Is this gonna be black and white, or is this gonna be basically how one person interprets it? Another person may interpret it different. I mean, how deep is this gonna go?
Until we ever review it, I can't answer that.
And do you want me to have proper settlement and something to balance too? Or do you want me to keep doing the way it's previously been done and just, whatever they capture, they capture? Because I feel like we should be making sure that proper capture is happening for each of the taxing units.
Make it true, raise the title for what they're supposed to get, but not over entitled, grabbing what they're not supposed to. I mean, just example of EMS, $20,000. You know, if they're not supposed to be captured. You know, if they're not supposed to be capturing that amount of money, they're supposed to be going to EMS, it shouldn't be going to EMS. It shouldn't be going to their DDA. You know, or, or, you know.
Clarification, we need to know, is a renewal considered a newly voted millage? And is it subject to capture?
Again, I, I, I hear you, but how deep is this going to get? I mean, how bad of a fight could this become with the DDA?
DDAs, plural.
This, well, I guess what we'd have is we would have an attorney look at this and give us a recommendation of where he thinks it's at. If it's in a discussion with the DDA, it would have to be a discussion with the county commissioners and the DDA. To, to look at that if there's going to be big changes. It, it was from speaking to Tim, it's pretty clear in the statute that the new nine-one-one millage. Can't be captured because that authority did not exist when the plans were created. So new authorities are a taxing entity that were never notified and can't. So that one we can withhold because we know that it should not be captured.
I mean, but the DDAs do things for. The county.
Yes, they do.
I mean, they're improving the county there. I, I don't know if this is Commissioner Scott, I'm sure you have an opinion, let's hear it.
Well, I, I do because I'm involved with the DDA. But, um, I, I think that we should at least take a quick look at it, have some may look at because. If, if they are taking a little bit more than they should be, I think everybody agrees that they should take their share. That's it. You know, if it's off the county, it, it looks seven point nine mills of county. If it's seven point five, then they should get seven point five. Point four. You know, I don't want to argue with the, I'm not trying to argue the, the point of having a DDA. But, uh, they have a method of collecting, uh, monies. They're, they're utilizing that. But if they can't tap new millages or new authority millages, we should know that.
I, I don't disagree with you there.
Especially if we need to put that in language in the next millage request.
And, and that's where Karen and I, we just want to make sure we're doing it properly. We're not opposed to the DDAs or trying to take money from them or whatnot. But it's to know for sure that they should be taking this, not taking this, and where do we stand with it?
If it's just taxing authorities. That's one thing, but there has been a couple of new millages that we put across. And I don't, you know, if, if, if these, if these particular DDAs can't take from them, I don't want them to take.
I think we, isn't there Brad, Brad's on one of them, isn't he? What's he, what's he on? And I remember him reporting that they weren't financially real, uh, stable right now. So I don't know if any of the DDAs are, are. Or are they, was, was there a project that they were short on funds for?
They had, they had excess funds. They, they did, they're doing a large project out to, uh.
The sewer and water.
Sewer and water and the sidewalks and stuff. And they, they paid for a large chunk of that out of the reserves they had last year. And they had to. Get some assistance from West Orange Township to finish that project. The revenues issue will probably offset that, or from what. In targeting one of the township officials, it's. The, the bids just came in higher than they thought. They chose to go ahead with it. The township is. Helping them with that to complete the project, but they can pay it back with the funds that they're getting through the district.
Mr. Von, do you have an opinion?
Like you say, what, what's proper is proper, you know, it, it, it needs to be, needs to be rectified. So.
I just.
Tell the what and, yeah, so be it.
I just don't think we want to get super deep into this. I don't disagree with you with the new millages and, and I would just. Have them take a glance.
Beginning phase, we'll see how deep it goes.
Yeah.
It may not go that deep, who knows?
Again, we're not against the DDA development districts. Right, we just want to make sure that they are capturing what they're supposed to capture.
Right.
And have something to balance too. Because right now, that doesn't exist.
Agreed. My question was, is it going to be black and white where we look at this, that, that they can agree that, yes, this is the amount? Versus two people, two different opinions, and now it turns into a, a, uh, well, argument.
In the gray now.
And definitely. One of the things in speaking with Tim, our attorney, he, he opened up that we would have a discussion. Uh. He doesn't want the county to sue the DDA or end up in court. I mean, there's discussion right now between the library, district library and the DDA. And they've got attorneys and that's going to court on whether they can levy district library millage. The library's attorney says they can't. The, the township DDA says, yes, we can. So they're already challenging that in court at this point. I've had both sides of my office ask me about it. I, I really don't know, that's.
Right, I understand that. I just again think the DDA's purpose is to improve the county, so. Uh, what's Tim's specialty? What is he, what's he specializing?
He's a line use guy. Um, so anything to deal with zoning or, you know, DDAs and so on, he does that. He also does some work in the area of, uh, treasurer. But mostly he's, um, and he plays piano.
So he's our guy? So you'll get back to us, you'll keep us up to date on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did speak with him already, but he kind of encouraged us to have discussions, local discussions. With the DDAs, with the township treasurers, but.
We needed to send him more information.
Yeah, I really just want to see a report that says. This is what they should capture and be able to say at the end of settlement, yep, that's what they captured.
Right, black and white, pretty simple. I have a feeling this is not going to be simple.
In, in the BSNA program, we have the ability to, when we enter a millage, whether it's capture, it's not. Within that program, and so once we know for sure that, yes, this should be or shouldn't be. We can enter in a program, then the township treasures, city treasurer. They'll have the same report that Karen has every time to make an adjustment for border review or tribunal. It'll adjust that figure. So at the end of the day, when they come in to settle with Karen next year. They'll have this report that they can base everything off of.
But these millage have been the same over the years from the time they were approved until now, as far as the amount that they've been capturing, correct? Or do they capture a different?
They change.
Well, we changed the millage rates.
Correct. But the way the DDAs work is there's a, we call the cap year, which is usually the first year. Any growth in the taxable value from there forward, they capture. We continue to collect, in this case, uh, what, uh. You know, one here was established in two thousand and seven, so we would continue to collect at that two thousand and seven rate. They capture all of the growth, so that number is going to change every year, hopefully for the positive. There've been a couple of experiences in the state where the values actually went down and, okay, what do you do then, you know? But.
So who decides the value?
The city, it's the assessment role. I mean, the city, rural city was negative for the last, since I've been here. This is the first year they've had a positive DDA where they're going to capture something in several years. Uh, they had loss of value in the city and, and it went down. But, uh. You know, the starting year for West Orange Township was nineteen ninety-one, so it's, it's, uh, that's where the values were froze at that point. They extended the TIF plan in two thousand and seven, and then they extended it again in twenty twenty. So the original plan from nineteen ninety-one has been extended to twenty forty-five.
So you said the assessment role, who? Uh, nevermind.
It's, it's based off the taxable value of the.
Okay.
So each year as, when I come in with the equalization report and in two sec, April twelfth. You guys will certify the assessment roles for each of the local units.
Yep.
You will certify the numbers for the DDA as well. That's part of that process, is part of the reports that come out of that.
Good. So it should be black and white then?
We hope so.
I have history in this subject area. I see Randy smirking. Um, but I, I like the direction that they've proposed. They, both Karen and Randy have both. Indicated they want to collaborate with the DDAs too. This isn't a card that we're going to hold back and then play and say, gotcha. They want to work with everybody so that we all have the same framework that we're working with. And ultimately, I think it'll, it'll work out as a positive. So long as we don't get into the philosophies behind DDAs and, you know, that, that's, that's not what we're after. We just want to make sure that we all know what the numbers are and we all agree what those numbers are.
But they don't, just so I understand this and then I'll move on, but they don't make the decision. It's based on this assessment value as far as how much money they're getting, correct? So they don't have a, a voice in this.
Right, so it's a matter of how has that been calculated over the years? And this is where, where this conversation started is. We have no confidence that anybody really knows whether or not we're doing this correctly. Let's, let's figure it out and then moving forward. We'll all be of, of the same understanding. We'll all have the foundation to work from and, you know, ten years from now. We're not having this conversation.
So we're starting from now, moving forward.
Right.
Like they say, we're all hooked into BSNA, correct? Yes. All the township now, so.
Should be simple.
Yes, I don't know that we'll have all of these details ironed out for this year's settlement.
Right.
Because this all came about last year and Randy and Tim and I have been having conversations. Over this past year about how do we approach this? What's our next step?
The best step was because you have an attorney knowing retainer can some of these things without incurring thousands of dollar bill to look at it for you, so.
You'll get back to us.
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Oh.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Karen, you're still in the hot seat. Thanks, Randy. Uh, reappointment to land bank.
Yes, so I have three, three positions on the land bank that unknowingly, uh, slipped by December thirty-first, they expired. They've all agreed to stay on the board and I would like to keep the same board members on land bank at this time because we're continuing to develop new plans. Uh, policies, procedures. So we want to keep the same people on the board and I'm asking for those three. Uh, Sue Delahanny, John Dunster and Scott Bell to please be reappointed.
It was there, oh, right there. No. Was there an email? Was there something in, I didn't see those names. Was there something in our, on our iPad?
There's not, but I remember putting out there, there should be a file that gives you the names of everybody that you have on an appointed board.
Oh.
Uh, yeah.
I don't care, okay. Well, how long's the term?
Um, they're staggered, um. I believe it's, uh, one-year, two-year and three-year terms staggered. So these three are. On the one-year term cycle.
And they all want to stay?
And they have all agreed to stay.
Questions, guys?
No, I'm fine.
So we'll put that on for resolution?
Right, they, they're actually appointed to three-year terms, so you'll have the three of them. They will expire on, in twenty twenty-four. And then at the end of this year, you've got three more who would expire and they may be up for reappointment to a three-year term, so.
And then two more in twenty twenty-three.
How many do you have on there?
Wow, yeah, it's all set by statute.
Anything for Karen, guys?
And then I have more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The requests for funding.
Oh, we're so on, I meant, is there anything more on one? We're good there?
Okay.
Three, two, land bank ARPA request.
So you all received a copy of the letter, uh, that was submitted for request of funding for the land bank.
Yep.
To help with economic development for abandoned properties. Um, these requests are also going out to all the local units as well.
What would be your, so say you were granted the hundred thousand dollars from the ARPA funds. How would you plan on using it, dispersing it?
So that is in talks right now in our land bank. We just had a meeting on the ninth and, um. We are developing our policies and procedures manual. There's seasoned employees that were on the previous land bank board who thought that a. Policy and plan, procedures plan existed that was adopted, they think back in two thousand and eight, yet nobody has a copy of it. So right now I'm searching to see if one really exists and was, did the Board of Commissioners adopt that? So I'm researching that history. If we can't find that, we're developing a new one. So the only thing I can tell you at this time is we're developing our policies and plan, procedures plan. But our first, um, task force is to, um, fight blight on abandoned properties. Because we already have two of those in our ownership that needed immediate attention.
So what do you mean by fight blight?
Fighting blight? Fights of light to clean it up. There are two properties with.
Yep.
Um.
Right.
Yes, serious blight that need attention that are, um, in good locations, um, to the lake, the public.
Yep.
Um, beach there in Skidway.
Yep.
So if we clean them up, I believe that we're, we will have viable properties to sell. Put the monies back in and continue to improve properties and. Economics in our area.
Who's the other request going to?
The other letters that I sent out, every single township, township, city and village, everyone, everyone's getting a letter.
And they have different amounts?
Um, we left it, the dollar amount. Unstated.
We got stated.
You got stated.
Everybody else did.
Yes, that was board decision to state.
If they give you anything, you're, you're going to be very happy and when I give you less, you're going to, you're going to point the finger at me.
So fight blight, that was, that, that is what you would do as far as tearing properties down, clean them up. You wouldn't fight to get them cleaned up by the, I guess, where the owners. Okay. Okay, never mind. I'm putting it all together.
Okay.
So it's properties that the county owns, we would.
The land bank owns.
Yeah.
The land bank is the owner, the owners of the property and then. Funding for the land bank, we clean up the properties, we sell them, funding goes back into land bank and we continue to improve. Areas of our community.
Absolutely.
Making it better for everyone.
Questions?
And I don't have this on the agenda, however, I did email everyone some information from Mihaf. Um, it's a Mishda program with funding up to twenty-five thousand dollars for homeowners of principal residents. It'll help with their mortgage payments, their delinquent taxes, utilities, homeowner association fees. A lot of areas of assistance if they were affected, financial hardship with COVID. So I wanted to get information out to everyone possible. I have it on my social media Facebook page. I contacted all the department heads, I've contacted all the commissioners, I emailed it out to all the townships. So please share that information so that we can get help to those in need in our community.
I planned on, uh, just, uh, giving it out, um, at the township meetings, but those won't start till next. What's the deadline on that?
I don't know that it had a set deadline, honestly.
Those won't start till the first next month, so.
Um, and again, I did send these out to all of the township treasurers and some of the supervisors who I have email addresses for.
They don't always get their emails, check them, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Copies with you, and I have copies in the hallway, so if you don't have a copy or you're short on printing supplies at home. Grab a copy and take it with you to your township meetings. But this is a great program for people in our community that have had financial hardships in these last couple of years.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Three E, Breck Gildner, clerk, related to postage meter.
Um, this is just simply. The postage meter. Um, we're up for contract. And they have a updated version. That is. Better, uh, and cheaper, or less cost.
I was impressed, I said it's less.
Yes, we took out, um, I've actually had a few, uh, phone calls with him and. We took out everything we don't use, um, got the price down quite a bit. So I just need approval to go ahead with this, to purchase it. The contract's up, we have, we, it's our postage, we need it. So I just need approval to.
Did this just get put on there? It wasn't on there last night? Just got to stop doing that.
I'm telling you, um, I think this is a five-year agreement.
Yep.
It is.
No, because this was not on there yet.
What's our cost now?
So it's on there.
What page? This is the first time I'm looking at this.
Three E two is the current one.
Current, that's current.
Three E's, three, three's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Couple hundred bucks.
So monthly currently for nineteen fourteen.
For buying a.
Now we're.
What do you see that three?
Twelve hundred. This is what we pay right now. And then either.
They're going to upgrade the machine.
You stupid thing.
Okay. Quarterly budget doesn't postage current proposed, Brittany browse?
Proposed, yeah.
Huh?
Proposed.
For less money.
Yeah.
Three sixty, yeah, okay. And a five-year contract?
Yeah.
Sixty months.
Kind of a no-brainer.
Questions? Just put this stuff on earlier so I can read it.
It's not like the machine is paid off and now we can use it for free. We still have to enter another contract.
Correct.
And just keep paying what we're paying.
But less.
Or we can go with a new machine.
No.
And get it for new, cheaper. Well, is that what we're looking at here?
Is it the, is it the same, is it the same machine?
No.
We're going to get a new machine.
Correct.
At a lower cost.
Correct.
Yes.
So I'm going to come with the other one? Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is the machine, because we've gone through this five years with this machine, is it paid off?
It's just a lease, right? It's just a lease.
It's a lease.
It's a lease.
It's a lease.
We don't own it at the end of the lease.
Right, so we're going to replace that machine and pay less money a month for it.
Correct, do you want to keep that machine and pay more money for it?
No, no, I'm just, just talking it out, that's all.
It's a no brainer. It just needs, needs to be.
Same quality of machine, everything.
Better, it's better, isn't it?
It is better.
Prices don't go down, they go up and there it's available?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yep. So.
Do we do resolution, can we just say, go ahead?
It's gotta be resolutions, money.
Five years.
In a contract.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm definitely favorable resolutions.
So there's like the maintenance and everything's covered underneath there, there's no hidden fees, we're good?
I didn't see any hidden fees, of course they'd be hidden.
Contract in black and white at the bottom says sixty months and three hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents a month, billed quarterly.
Nothing's cheaper, come on.
Yeah, we took stuff off.
Fun things you didn't need.
Yeah.
Didn't use.
Yeah.
Questions?
Sounds great.
Okay. Discussion items, is that it?
Yep, I'm good.
Leave time donation request and policy waiver for a.
Yeah, we have a section in our, our um, leave time contribution policy that states employees may only make one leave time donation request for each FMLA qualifying event which will result in an extended absence from work. We have a situation where an employee uh, is uh, remains off work for the same FMLA qualifying event, so uh, strict interpretation of the policy says this employee cannot request leave time donation. What I would like to suggest is, because this is a very narrow case, is I will put together for you a resolution to waive that requirement and allow this employee to petition us to have leave time donations uh, for a second time for, for the illness.
Questions?
How much time are we allowing to transfer?
That's all defined in the policy, employees can donate up to forty hours. For the specific.
They're asking for forty more hours.
They're asking for whatever hours people are willing to donate.
Each employee could donate forty, if they so choose.
Right. This employee is out of all other.
I am.
Commissioner Scott?
Got it spelled out, I just, it's, it's a matter of setting another precedent.
Which means what?
Well, we're dealing with union position? Yes, so we're, we're setting up a past practice. Even if it is narrow, you call it narrow now, do you call a next one narrow again?
On the other side of that coin, we're getting uh, accrued time off, off the books.
Right.
If this happens.
That part too, I get that part too.
But remember, hopefully these cases are very few and far in between, this obviously is a, a individual that's off for FMLA for a reason.
It's just about the second one I've heard about here in the last few months.
Probably the same.
It's the same, some people didn't get the opportunity or they missed the opportunity to donate. They got the.
Commissioner Vaughn.
They just missed.
I'm sure they need it.
I don't know what the downfall to this would be, I, I guess I just don't understand.
Make your resolution then.
I'm asking your opinion.
Think about it.
Are you, are you concerned about running into issues with the union?
Well, I mean, running into that issue, is it gonna be black and white the next time? Or is it gonna, is it gonna be muddy waters later?
Understandable, I'm just all about helping people, especially when they're obviously in need, so I, I, I'm in favor of it. Do you see an issue, Tim?
I think this would be a very positive thing to do, um, again, from, you know, purely from a management perspective, there's a lot of leave time on the books.
Yeah, there is.
And if you're paying it out at a lower rate, because she's gonna be paid at her rate of pay versus the person that's donating.
Or his.
Or his.
That person.
To that person, so now is it coming, the accrued liability coming off the books, but you're paying it at a lower rate.
Possibly.
Possibly, possibly to him or her.
Item four B, appointment to Veterans Affairs Board. Did Jeff wanna touch base, Jeff? Jeff, you're on the phone, did you wanna touch base on this? I think you're on mute, Jeff, if you're trying to talk.
Yeah, here I am, it wouldn't let me unmute. Um, I, I didn't even know this was gonna be on the board until I saw it today. We haven't even done the advertising on, in the paper yet, so I, I, I think it's a little early yet because uh, the board, the board committee doesn't even get appointed until March. So it can be, uh, take the position on May first.
Okay, so would you like just to put this on the next committee of the whole, is this premature?
Jeff, we're looking at the reappointment of Larry Boyce to the board, is what we're, what we've got, I think you're confusing things.
No, um, it is, it is a reappointment, but he's not due until April, until April.
Oh, okay, I was thinking something else, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Surrick.
We just have to start the pro, we just have to start the process now because we have to advertise it in the paper and uh, and then uh, give them two weeks to respond and generally we don't get any responses. I, I, in all honesty, we probably won't get any takers on this, it'll Larry Boyce, uh, we just had him fill out the paperwork so that he's taken care of. Uh, but generally speaking, we normally unless, unless the, a person is actually leaving the committee, generally we don't get any volunteers to take the position otherwise.
So you have to advertise it to see if anybody else is interested?
Correct, yeah, ju, by statute we're required to advertise it because it's considered an open position every year and uh, they didn't used to do that, but we took it to uh, Man, Lamborn, I think it was, it's been a while when we took it to them and uh, she said we had to advertise even though we, we, we weren't getting people to volunteer for it, our guys were continuing on that position. The only time we replaced people normally was health reasons, they had to resign.
Okay, so do you want us just to hold off on this, Jeff, at this point in time?
Yes, you can put that off until, I'll, I'll bring it to you probably at the end of March.
Okay, thank you Jeff, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Item four C, ARPA funds, we got item one, thirteen ways to kill your community video.
Um, I don't know if Tom can hear us, he took the link and we were gonna play that.
I can, um, I'll share your screen so everybody can see it and then I'll play it, but it's gonna mute your guys' mics, so if there's any problems, Craig, just let me know, but we should be good to go.
Thanks, Tom.
This is the six and a half minute. Videos, right?
It's not the over and a half one, man.
No, but that'd be good.
I'm done with the book, it's in my.
It did, wasn't it?
It was.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to play this, I'd like to play this one at every meeting I go to. Uh, viewers get to see this too.
He's gonna share a screen.
I don't think I can share the microphone with the Zoom viewers. I'm guessing you guys have no audio, correct? For the video? You can hear the video?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let it go.
Thanks, Tom.
That's good.
Sure, want to read the book?
Yes, the book's better. All right now, I have a place for listening.
You can go on YouTube and there's a couple of them that are a little longer, an hour, a little over an hour, and he gets in depth with every one of those subjects. It's unbelievable because like I say, I'd love to show this at every committee and town meeting I go to.
That was really good.
Item 4C2, project review.
So you have the updated list, there was a communication from the fair, they prioritized the projects that they had put forward the last committee, the whole meeting, so it's a couple of weeks ago. Couple of things were added, the land bank project was added to the list, I will be going through the capital improvement plan that we had from last year and pulling out the projects that were you know, qualify as capital improvement, and I'm not talking about things like patrol cars that we're going to have on a rotation, but there was one project that pops into my radar way that had to do with one of the courts and reorienting where the bench is so that you can get more people into the court. And also some improvements to jury area and so on, those kind of projects, anyway, I'll call out so that you see them on this list. The downside to that is, is like so many of these, there's no cost tied to it, so while we're talking about these, we have no idea, we haven't put anything out for any kind of proposal. But that would be at a subsequent step in all of this before we prioritize which ones we want to do that with.
We have to get some, some costs in here for some of these as well.
So looking at, let's just take the
Security cameras.
Okay, security cameras, if that were a project that you would like to pursue, whoever determine which, which project you're going to be able to fund. If there's a project on there that you're absolutely not interested in, we don't want to spend the time getting quotes for it. If it's just not going to make the list, so that's the idea behind that, anyway.
So when do we sit down, what are we doing with this list currently?
Well, right now, it's stagnant, now the last committee, the whole meeting, I provided you with just a starting point for scoring projects like this. So that's a conversation that, that you want to have, even if you even want to do that, I mean, that's not a conversation that we've had. I would like to suggest, because these meetings, even the committee hall meetings, there's county business on these things, and we just don't have the time to wrap our minds around what we're looking at and what process is going to work best. Don't be fearful, Craig, this is not a bad thing, but what I'm going to suggest is that your eyes really, oh no, what's it going to do, no, but I would like to just suggest that you have a special meeting where that is the only thing that's on the agenda. And we really get into the conversation about it. I don't think it's going to take more than one meeting to begin really putting some substance to what we want to do, but when we have other items on the agenda that we still have to get through, I don't think our minds are completely focused on this.
I agree, how do you guys feel about that?
Absolutely, as I said last meeting, we have some entities that have asked, put requests in some of those, like some, some kind of an answer, if, if there's a chance that they're going to be on, and stay on the list or not. So, and I got a couple of things I'd like to add to it, and you know, I think we got to come down to something.
So how about we pick a date, why don't we start there?
Okay, would you, if you want to do that tonight, we can, but we could also have Mary get ahold of you to find out when you're available and try to coordinate.
I'm okay, either Friday or an evening is the only thing I'm available for.
Friday during the day or an evening?
Friday, anytime of the day, or any evening. Other than that, I agree, so.
Friday works for me.
Friday during the day works for you, okay?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
I'm retired.
So is me. So a Friday.
A Friday.
He's just tired.
He doesn't know what Fridays are.
I don't know when it comes.
So we're looking at a Friday, if you can kind of communicate with us.
Will do.
Okay.
Good. Would you like to do it as soon as tomorrow?
No. Yeah, that's not fair to the other commissioner that's not here. Are you guys okay with next Friday?
Yeah. What's the date?
February 25th.
I have a plan that they just look.
What time of day works for you guys?
Well, like 10 o'clock?
10.
Something like that.
7 o'clock in the morning, get Craig out of bed.
I could do 7, but Mark doesn't.
I can't.
He has a problem with 9.
Okay. Is that going to, that's what's going to be posted? So in the meantime, do you want us to look at that scale that you presented and, and kind of, do you want us to scale this, that what we're looking at? Do you want something in writing, do you want just open discussion, what are you looking for?
Open discussion, just everybody look at it before the meeting and we'll, we'll talk it through, you may look at the list and say, we don't need to go through a formal scoring, we want to do X, and that's fine, there's no rule about how you go about this, but if there are competing projects in there, we just can't make up our mind. That's where a scoring system would be helpful, each commissioner could score the projects, then we compile them and you'd have at least some guidance that way as to where the priority should be.
Okay. Good guys. Okay, item. Oh, you had three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I went to road commission meeting, the road commissioners are asking me if ARPA money could be used for, to help with roads. As far as I knew, we probably could, I told them that the consensus that we had was that it'd be a share kind of expense. They were talking about maybe a road in a, in a poorer township, I said, well, you know, I just threw out that maybe the township puts in 10%, road commission puts in 45, we put in 45. Just as a, for instance, hypothetically speaking, something like that, I said that we had talked about shared projects for nonprofits and other entities. And that seemed to be the consensus, what we're talking about. I told them, we probably wouldn't have an answer for them for months. Because I think that they're probably going to be a little lower on the priority list, that's just my opinion when I gave them that answer. The other one was the airport meeting. I was at the airport meeting Wednesday after the road commission and talking with the city, when the mayor just happens to be here today. You are mayor tonight, aren't you, or are you? So, right now, the funding for the airport between the two entities is 60/40, the, the county is 60, the the county is 60 and the city is 40. We're looking at just a $10,000 to go with a 60/40 split there. Right?
Say that again, $10,000 for what?
$10,000 request of ARPA.
What do they want to use it for?
Well, we got a couple of projects going right now.
So we were looking at getting broadband out there, correct? So is, is that what you're talking about?
We didn't talk about broadband in the meeting, but it could be that.
Because wasn't that conversation that you had with?
We don't have prices there either, yeah.
Just got one. Oh, when I do update the list again, you'll see that.
Do you have a close figure?
You didn't think it'd be too bad?
I think it's in the 60,000 range.
Oh.
Maybe 64, that's what I remember.
Would that be the airport, would that be the airport and the transit?
Right, airport, transit, and I think they said something about an industrial park.
Along the way as well. Oh yeah, there's these industrial parks, lax broadband.
So those, those were the yeah, those were the three entities that were mentioned, but of course, this line and where it goes to allow anybody else along there to tap into it as well, so you're not just, we're just combined, or confined to those three.
But our responsibility through there is the airport, well, and the transit.
Right, yeah.
Is that it, Commissioner Scott?
Just the one other thing with the airport, but did you want?
Yeah, that's down, that's down, yep, so your other project review is you had the airport and you had the road commission, was that it?
Yep.
Item deconfidentiality policy.
I don't know that you want to spend a whole lot of time on this tonight, because it did drop just today, so we really haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but this is our first draft of trying to capture what we discussed a couple of meetings ago about confidential information and how we handle it. It's something that you want to look at if there was a specific area that, that we want to discuss, so we did talk about the ability to bring someone in the public that they need to talk about. I don't know, some filing with the clerk's office, but they don't want to have that conversation in the public corridor, what do we do? That might be something you want to leave to the departments, so they can either bring the person into their office or come into this one of these rooms to be more confidential with those conversations, this policy really focuses on how we handle the information that we receive, and really, the, the theme of it is, it's kept confidential, we do what we can to make sure that occurs. There are some things in here that are very obvious, we don't obviously give out social security numbers, and there's actually state statute discusses that. But you'll see here that we tried to cover the gamut, that would also include things like passwords that get into our IT system, we don't want those shared. You know, any payroll or personnel records, we don't just give those out, certainly anything subject to HIPAA would be confidential. So this is just, again, the first crack at it, and I expect there'll be suggested edits as we move forward.
Where did you get this template from?
It's a combination of about three or four different places, one of them, a couple of them actually came from universities. But I did have one other county that had a similar policy, so I tried to piece them all, you know, the best parts of each one of them.
Yeah, I just got this, I'm kind of off, I'd like to look at this, so, a little closer, so I don't think this is ready to be passed.
It's not, yeah, definitely it's not.
Questions, comments?
But I did double sided, so I didn't fill two pages.
Did you look it over yet or no?
I, I did.
And?
I like what I see.
Okay, you have some more time to look it over?
I've got a couple of things highlighted, I think, just minor correction, nothing, nothing serious.
Commissioner Scott?
I'd like a little more time.
Perfect, Commissioner, I'm new here, okay. Item E, x-ray machine repair.
So Tom asked me, and you just passed this along, he's not ready yet to make any recommendations on moving forward, in fact, we don't have a quote on this specific machine. But what you've got, at least in terms of background, is some history even with this machine at Roscommon County, so you'll see in here with a Smith's detection emails that went back and forth, and then Roscommon County actually provided us with a copy of an invoice that they had. And you can see it's pretty pricey. So that, I think the question that the board had was whether or not you wanted to enter into, to any kind of an agreement for this machine, or we did, we did learn to just dispose of the machine, probably will cost a couple thousand dollars, so even
Which is why Roscommon
Give it away free to somebody else.
If you look at the Roscommon quote, they saved $1,000 for disposal by giving it to us. If you look at what they paid for their new machine and you'll see installation disposal exists in the x-ray machine, $1,000. So they saved a thousand bucks by plowing it off on Oldama.
Did you go get, did you go get that ride?
Good for the, good for Roscommon, that shows initiative.
Now you know what to bill us.
This just got dropped too, so I haven't had a chance to look at it.
And it's not ready for anything yet, Tom just wanted to show that we, that we are making, you know, some headway, at least in terms of our research.
I can take it back to Roscommon.
Falls off the trailer on the way back up there, I don't know. I'll make sure he gets past Craig's house when it falls off, but.
Okay. Or B update. Glad we're laughing, guys. Who's going to start with the ORB update?
Give you a quick update of what's, what's here, we did have the Lake County ORB ordinance that was provided to us by Dean Coleman. Dean's focus was on the fines that are in the ordinance itself, he, he's been here before, that's not new to you, he's, he's already expressed some interest in seeing the fines increased. But he did feel that there were some good points in the Lake County ordinance that were worthy of our attention. And you've also got an email from Tanya over at, she's Logan Township.
Yep.
Right? And your comments are here. And that's it, so that comes down to now, I mean, I, I think the if you were to, you know, adopt outright the Lake County ordinance, well, that's a whole new ordinance, I don't know if you wanted to go that far with it, but I think some of the things though, that we've talked about in the past are incorporated in here, so interesting reading.
We looked at this, I actually, we talked about this last meeting, I believe, and I wanted to know where this, this county was even, and if it was comparable to Oldama, and you guys said, yeah.
They have a lot of ORB trail over there and stuff like that, I, I, I made some notes on ours, a couple of missions. Basically, included all the township in it, rather than any exclusions, because from what I, what I've been hearing is nobody wanted out of it. And so, and then far right of the maintained portion of the road, after talking to the road commission, 25 mile an hour, and then I said, go ahead, make it simple, double, double the fines. And go from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Why that time?
I just heard different opinions and I came to a came to a time.
So do you find that much different than what it is now?
Well, it's, time wise, it goes to a half hour after sunset.
Right, which is what time?
Well, depending on the time of year.
So you want, that's where I'm going with this, so you want a set time, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM versus, because that's kind of subjective, sunup, sundown type of thing?
It is, I mean, you take a look at the Weather Channel, it tells you one thing, and it's bright, it's bright out, you know, you know, I mean, so yeah, what is sunset, you know?
Right.
Sunset on cloudy day or sunset on, no clouds, you know?
So I guess what's your, what's your reasoning behind 11:00 PM versus midnight or 1:00 AM?
Just a little earlier.
You're right there.
Yeah.
But was there reasoning?
It was a little bit earlier.
Okay.
That's kind of the reason, I'm, I'm, I'm an off-road guy, but
You are, that's why I'm asking you.
But I ride a plated motorcycle, so I'm legal, it doesn't matter what, because I'm legal, I'm plated.
But we have the opportunity to make them legal.
Well, yes and no, I mean, I could get, I can ride an M road where they can't.
Okay.
Okay. When I say legal, just like riding a street bike, legal. But no, for an ORB though, to ride on the road, this is only on the road, this isn't, they want to ride around the woods at 4:00 AM, that's fine. We're only talking about an ordinance that covers the roadways.
We are, but how this got brought up was we had the Clear Lake Bar owners come to us and their, their facility is around roads, so that's why they requested this time be extended.
Yeah, yeah, I felt it was a compromise.
That's fair.
Rather than go till 3:00 AM, it was compromised, I've, I've heard people that didn't even want to go as far as 11:00. I just so that was a time, that's my suggestion.
Okay, Commissioner, so that's why we're talking.
I
What time?
Specifically time?
He gave me one, so.
And I'm, in my discussions with people, there wasn't really any definitive time, I guess, you know, as long as it's operated with a headlight and a taillight. You know, after sunset. But I would think 11, 12 would be reasonable.
Was it 11 or was it 12?
What difference, 11:30? I go midnight, I'd say midnight.
I haven't really heard anything on tides, the, the biggest complaints I've been hearing is the speed. That the fines need to be increased, like doubled to, to slow these people down. They're ripping down the roads and, and they just need to slow down and follow some rules as far as time.
Do you have an opinion?
No, I don't. I don't, I, I heard, you know, I heard the bar, bar owners, I know they want the business and, you know, they shut down at 2:00, so you know, if they're, if they're out of there at midnight, that's fine.
Sheriff, can you come up and give us your opinion? If you don't mind.
Don't look so happy.
You have to enforce this, correct?
I'm fine, um.
Am I?
It's, it's, it's open for debate, I mean, I really haven't sat down with anybody and discussed this, but
We've been talking about this for months.
I haven't talked with anybody specifically on it, but I, you're not going to make everybody happy with it, I can tell you, no matter what.
But you're the one that enforces this, correct?
Yes, I would, I would suggest maybe law enforcement people need to get together. And we'll see what happens, see what, see what everybody feels about it, get MSP, get our, our local police departments together and have a meeting just on this, and see where it goes.
Okay.
That's what I would suggest.
So can you make that happen, because this has been being discussed now for quite a few months?
Well, we've been waiting on townships to
Right.
give us some input. So have we heard all, from all the townships?
I think they've had ample opportunity.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's what I understood, we're just going to, you know, give them a time date and that's it.
So can you come back to us next month?
Yeah, I can work.
Does a month give you enough time to talk to everybody?
If not, I'll ask for an extension, we'll see what happens.
Because we're going into that time of year.
Yes, we are.
So it'd be nice to have it set in stone and I agree with time.
I can see what, I can see what the consensus is.
I think that sunset, sunrise, something is too subjective, I agree with the time.
Yeah.
Whatever time that may be.
Yeah, and it's going to change daily too, sunset, sunrise.
That's why I say I agree with the time, like this is black and white. Versus whatever time you guys decide that.
No matter what we come up with, we're not going to please everybody, for sure.
Right, but your job is to keep people safe.
And I will work on it.
Okay, are you guys good with that? So we'll put that next month. Sheriff?
Yep.
Item G, quarterly budget adjustments.
Hey, I'm, I'll walk you through this, there's a lot of information here, if we want to do a really deep dive, it's all here, we can do it. But let me just walk through what this resolution does and point to where the other detail is, if you want to get into it, and then we'll go from there. So on the resolution itself, the way it's formed on the bottom of that first page, under the, be it further resolved, you see three funds that are mentioned, the general fund, the road patrol milage fund, and the community correction fund. By the time this exercise was finished, these are the only three funds that actually had a change that would be proposed as part of this budget adjustment for the first quarter, and in each case, we're actually reducing the budget based on what, what, what's occurred. So starting with the general fund, the total budget will be reduced by just under $99,000, the road patrol milage funds reduced by 142,000. This number reflects the reduced millage that was passed with the budget resolution. But it does incorporate clearly the fund balance left over from last year. So the end result was a hundred forty-two thousand below what the maximum military would have gotten for us. And then finally, the community corrections fund. You'll remember a resolution back late last year where the funding that came in from the state was not enough to have those programs continue. So the action here would be simply to reduce that fund to zero for this year. So that would be the official act. As far as, as far as the budget for community corrections is concerned. Now, the next section, starting where it says general fund revenue, you have each line item of revenue in the general fund. What its current budget is, what was passed back in September. Any proposed change would appear in the next column and you don't see many. And then finally, what the new adjusted budget amount would be. You don't see any change until we go all the way to the bottom of the revenue section. And the only changes there are the fund transfers that you've already approved in resolutions. One of those was coming from the tax revolving fund that, for that folder machine that we talked about at the last meeting. And then the CPL fund transfer in that we talked about to fund the position in the clerk's office. So those are the only changes on the revenue side. Next you have each department listed in the general fund and the change that would occur here. And again, these are all things you've already seen. We're just now making it official with an adjustment. Starting with the administrator budget that thirty-two thousand eight fifty-eight is the transfer from the contingency activity here to cover the administrative secretary position. And this is one of the reasons why we put an up to number in the resolution itself. The up to number was about thirty-nine thousand. But because of timing, when we were able to actually start the position, it comes out to be a little bit less. So the budget adjustment would be the actual number that we believe will be in, uh, in play in the end. The clerk budget amendment, that would be for the, uh, were a couple of things that we did, uh, uh, new position. And I think there was one other thing that we talked about. Anyway, uh, these are all already in resolutions that you've approved. These are just the actions that are actually happening. And the general appropriations actually reducing that activity by a hundred seventy-two thousand. Uh, general appropriations has two line items that are making up that number. The first one is the contingency line. We're just taking the money that's in those lines and putting it now into the departments where you've approved those expenses. The other, the bulk of this, about a hundred fifteen thousand was that double payment at the health department. And this is where they're taking the cost out of the budget, just showing it for auditing purposes that, that we do recognize that. And then finally, on the treasurer's budget, the fourteen seven fifty is for the folder machine that we purchased at the last meeting. Remember we did the transfer in already for the, from the revolving fund and also this reflects the transfer from the contingency line. The next section is just the breakdowns and there are a couple of others in here now. Oh, there's the, the other, and the clerk side was the overtime software expense that actually is, you know, a rather large chunk of that that we did shortly after this budget year started. Uh, and so again, you see the resolution reference that's in there. A couple of them that we didn't talk about because they didn't affect the bottom line of the department. First one is the sheriff's office and you can see there are four different categories. We've got the personnel expenses, the controllable expenses, the non-controllable expenses, and then the capital outlay. Way down on the bottom of this, I've defined for you what each of these categories entails. The personnel expenses, you know, self-explanatory, anything that has to do with personnel, that's what that is. Easier to talk about the non-controllable expenses than the controllable ones. The non-controllable expenses are things that we literally, we don't set. We don't set what the rate is for the phone bills. We don't set what the lean fees are in the case of the sheriff's office. So those are non-controllables. The controllable ones are things like office supplies, training, so on, things that we have direct say in. And then the capital outlay in the case of the sheriff, um, that, that's, uh, the vehicle line, I believe, that we move those funds around. Now, why are we doing this here? In the spreadsheets that follow, you see the details of where the line item numbers are, are changing. And in this case, and why it's on your agenda, the adjustment that occurs in the personnel services has to be approved by the board. So that's why you see it in this resolution. What we're attempting to do here is address the overtime issue that we discussed a few meetings ago. There is at the end of this narrative that was prepared by the undersheriff that talks about what's happening with the, the overtime and what they're doing to address it. But in the meantime, we have a budget situation. So we're addressing it here. This will not likely be the last time we have to address this. I hope it is, but in all likelihood, it, it probably won't be. So even though we make an adjustment this quarter, we may be back here in the third quarter, making another adjustment to it, just depending on how things uh, shape up with our plan on the, on the overtime issue. The same is true now with the corrections. It actually ends up being a decrease in the personnel services expense. Um, when we were all said and done with it. But by the way, when you get into the details, you can see where the funds were moved to cover the overtime. One interesting thing here, and we'll probably get with Tracy at some point to talk about it. Uh, we have a line item in the corrections for the cooks. We had two cooks that were on the, on the roster that was approved when the budget was approved. But there have been no expenses charged off to that. Well, we know we had a cook. So it's just been put in a different location. So we'll have to sort that out. Make sure that by the time the auditors come next year, that we have the proper expenses on the proper lines. That's not uncommon. It's just the accounting and we just, this is how we gotta keep track of some of that. And then finally, on the appropriations, this is just the movement again and the contingency line and then that additional payment from the, for the health department that's making up the change there. Same type of philosophy goes now with the specific funds themselves, the special funds. And you can see what we've done with the uh, road patrol millage. And again, you can look at the greater detail on the succeeding pages here to see how each of these plays out. Mentioned community corrections with MSU extension and veterans. You recall that we millage allocations for this year. So this is correcting the, the budget itself, reflecting the new millage rate. And you can see what, what's happened with the fund balances with extension. By the time this is all said and done, there will still be a ten thousand dollar fund balance uh, in there. And then with the veterans, uh, there'll still be a two hundred, three thousand dollar fund balance there. So they don't affect the bottom line. That's why you don't see them up before, but there are some line item adjust, adjustments to reflect that. And then finally, you see what those cost categories were. The next page is, I'm not gonna go into unless there's a specific question that you would like to, uh, talk about. Let me see, a mistake on the very first one that cut off a couple of columns. But you can see, looking through these, not only what the adopted budget was, but what the now I see what it did. Let me see what the adopted budget is, the amount that was year to date as of, in this case, was January twentieth. Uh, and what the percentage was. Um, and I'll have to, uh, do my print formatting a little bit better because it goes onto the next page now that shows you the recommended budget. But what I've done on the adjustment, uh, is only shown if there is an adjustment through the number in there. So you can go right to that. You don't have to hunt it down. You can find it in there. And this is, um, you can see on a couple of the other ones that it formatted correctly, so it can be done. Um, but you'll see on each of these, next one is the sheriff. If it's a reduction in the line, that's obviously in red and parentheses so that you can see it right away. The last page on that, that's G ten is the narrative concerning the, the overtime. Uh, I'll, I'll just say this on, uh, the meeting that we had as we went over this, it's actually pretty impressive. The amount of detail the sheriff, undersheriff, and the jail lieutenant were able to put together. Uh, I think this is a very good exercise to help project now moving forward uh, where things stand and what needs to be done with scheduling and so forth to help minimize the overtime. There is particularly with the jail, just convergence of very unique things happening like COVID and employees having to be off in quarantine and now having to backfill bowls, which costs us overtime. Um, you know, that's a big one. And again, as pointed out here, we will, uh, submit our paperwork for the CARES grant and, uh, you know, thirty thousand dollars will come back to help make up for some of that. And that will be part of another budget adjustment in a later quarter. So bottom line, what I'll be proposing is that resolution that you saw way back on the front pages uh, next Thursday to make these adjustments. Assuming that's approved, then the detailed sheets will be provided probably either to Tracy or to Mary to actually enter into the BSNA. So all the budgets are updated and we aren't stuck in a position in September, having to do all this at once.
Questions? Commissioner Serebik? Commissioner Scott?
No. This is what I've been, this is what I've been waiting for, for a long time, to see budget adjustments in detail like this. I like this. Think, uh, if we could offer some type of training to department heads and elected officials on how, how budgets work and on paper and everything else. So I like this.
Mr. Van?
No questions?
I, I just read this quickly. I, we must've just got this this afternoon too, right? All right. What is an eight hour? I guess there's something here. I don't understand. Part of this monitoring will include ensuring that eight hour workday is being taken during each pay period. What does that mean? I just didn't know. I don't know what it means.
No, eight hour. So you have a two week pay period. They work twelve hour shifts. So to meet that eighty hour minimum, they work twelve hours and then they're required to have one eight hour day to be.
Oh, okay. Okay. To get their forty hours.
Basically, it's just detailing that what part of the review process is to check those eight hour days.
Make sure they're using that eight hour day and that working twelves.
Was there a breakdown at all as far as the overtime with the corrections and the sheriff, with sheriff's department for the, uh, was there two, two individuals who went to the academy? So was that part of this overtime in the last three months, from September till now?
Yes, that was broken out as far as how it affected the budget and which budgets are affected and
Oh, it is?
Not, not there, but in my calculations and going through the overtime in the budgets. So I've got a value to that. Yes.
So if we have questions moving forward, say with, with others in the future, we, if we have a question related to how much overtime was accumulated during that time, you're gonna be able to provide that answer?
Basically, what I'm doing moving forward is I have a spreadsheet I created of each pay period. I'm logging the overtime and then also different categories for what that overtime entails. So on that spreadsheet, whether it's complaint related overtime, if it's shift fill overtime, if it's stay over because for officer safety purposes, we take our eight hour day. Training administrative. So it's broken down on the spreadsheet. And then it gives us a running tally of the fiscal year to date and also each pay period, how I've got it broken down. So we'll be able to look at that and use that information.
Well, that's also an explanation with, with training those officers. There's probably overtime there and that they should be trained now. And so we should see a significant decline. Are, are they all up and running?
We're still, we still got two that we're training. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's coming pretty good.
I'm sure that has to do with the overtime that we were seeing, correct? That's, that's my point here.
No vacancy? The two that are in training is your full vacancies?
No, we've, we've got two more that we can hire, but we're kinda waiting until we get these two trained before we really put speakers out there for two more to, to come aboard.
Oh, man.
So, yeah.
Every night I'm seeing another county looking for deputies on the news. Yeah. Seagull County has the state police to fill their shifts.
Is the, I seen something for, um, also I seen on the, uh, oh, shoot, the Michigan Township website, uh, there's a huge grant right now for sending, uh, individuals to academy for state, state. Huge. They're paying for it. For the academy for state police.
Yeah.
They're so short. Um, I had a question. I can't remember what it was. Is the corrections facility, are they, do they have any open, open positions or are they, they full as well?
Currently have two.
Oh, they do. Any other questions?
And we're advertising where for that?
Well, I'll tell you, I tried the AB.
Yeah.
Make sure I got the right. That was not very useful.
Okay.
For this line. Um, I created a couple of, you know, in order for the, to get to the level of review, you had to be certifications. Somehow, even though they, they answered yes, but when you review the information, they don't have the NCOS certification.
Okay.
So I really found that as it pertains to law enforcement, AB was not not a very useful tool for us. So we're still on NCOS. We're still in communication with other agencies in Kirkland and Delta.
How about honesty?
Well, we have a Ferris State University intern that we're looking at scheduling this summer. So I mean, you know, we're we're expanding some of our range. Uh, there's a student, high school student that's coming to for
She's a senior this year.
I heard, I heard through the vine that even Myers is having such a hard time finding help at their advertising in their stores downstate for anybody that's got a cabin or resort property up here, wants to transfer up here. And that's been my thing all along is is, you know, deputies or law enforcement corrections, people live down, down in, near the cities might wanna live up here.
I would, I would just like to see those figures. So going forward, if we have any individuals looking at the academy in the future, that, that if the question's asked as far as what the back cost to backfill that those figures are in front of us. So I would like to see those figures.
How about the unions? Can we advertise through the unions? The unions that, that support that, that corrections and, and, and officers belong to in other places?
Uh, it wasn't so much the unions. I mean, when you talk more like and associations or
Well, yeah, but there's, you're directly hitting the employee through the union.
I don't know that they would do that. I mean, there's something you can explore.
I know, I know the, the electrical workers union is looking, they're advertising for candidates for, uh, to get in their union to be electricians. You know, cause can't find any of the trades. I, I don't know, you know?
I, I'm not.
I'm just throwing out a suggestion is, do they have a website, you know?
So you're asking for a resolution for us, for resolution, this resolution to be on for next meeting?
Right.
To authorize adjustments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And we'll be seeing another one of these three months from now.
Well, actually you'll see it in about six weeks because we'll be past the second quarter and we'll go through the same exercise.
Questions, guys?
Oh, no.
But we'll see that.
We got every quarter, really.
Okay. So H, we have county building access.
Um, I, just because we had the opportunity, you've got, um, loaded here in your meeting material, a lot of history about how the building access policy came to be. And it all stems from a Supreme or a state court administering office or two thousand two, uh, directive that came out about, you know, having a single access point and so on. And this has evolved. And you see, there's a couple of, uh, sets of minutes in here that talk about how the county's security committee went through, determined which access point would be used and so on. So it's kind of useful background. With the situation that we're dealing with or just dealt with here in this past week, uh, it was a good exercise to deconstruct about how the individuals are notified if their key access will not work in a door in the future. Suggestion was a phone call maybe would have helped alleviate some of the angst that the decision created. And that's absolutely correct. Uh, and that's something I'll take responsibility for. Uh, just in talking through this, it will be very easy for us if we're gonna make a change. Obviously, we're gonna physically make the change. So we're gonna know what employees are impacted. So it will not be difficult for us to then pick up the phone and contact that employee and say, your access to this door, uh, will no longer work for whatever the reason might be. And we can work with department heads too, so that when this is being developed or considered, you know, employees can even be given advance notice, hey, we've done a reevaluation. We think that the access to these rooms are all that you need. You don't need to have it to the boiler room or whatever the room might be. Um, so that's, that's where the situation stands now. If there's any questions.
I do. Do you remember? Did we take inventory of who has keys? Who still has keys?
You're talking physical keys.
Yes. Do you remember? I know.
I did that for the security committee.
When we first started.
When we first started.
You did? You did.
You suspect somebody's got a key?
Well, I know somebody has a key. What did we do with that list?
Probably saved in my computer or something. Probably saved in my computer somewhere. Or I may still have it in my security book. It wasn't specific employees that had them, it was how many keys in each department was the list I had.
Okay.
Not specific employees holding a key, just how many keys were in each department.
Can we do something with that, Tim?
We really need to do something about this. Talking to Mary about this, we keep uncovering these things we've really got to get to. But in this case, you usually have one department. It might be, you know, a clerk, it might be myself, it might be maintenance, that is literally the keeper of the keys. And then you. When you assign a key out, then you have a list, you know where that key is and who has it. We don't have any such beast here that I know of. Uh now, what does that do? While some of our doors are still keyed, uh I know our front doors are keyed. We don't know who's got access. That's not a good position to be in. So we'll take a look at this. We might be looking at having to rekey some things just so that we know who's got a key.
I thought we did. I guess I'm, when we all started, I thought we, we basically started over. They, they did.
Well, the outside.
No, Tom did. Tom, are you on? Can you?
I am.
Can you clarify?
We did not rekey the internal doors, but we rekeyed the outside doors. And there's two people that have keys. And that's myself and Chris Casey.
So you didn't do anything with the internal doors?
That was a decision, I believe, at the security committee not to. It was the outside doors that were a concern. And the access control system is supposed to be used on all of the internal doors. But I do not have an inventory of who has internal keys.
But I thought when we first started, I remember Brad and I sat on the security uh committee. Um I remember filling out a, a form and I thought all employees did this, a check form as far as where they felt they needed access to. And then it was either approved by their department head or not approved. Did this not happen?
That did happen, but that's for the access control cards, not keys. I don't have any informational keys.
Are you talking about physical keys?
Yes.
No, we're talking about physical turnkey goes in a lock, like circuit courtroom, for example. Doesn't have, I don't think.
Order that we're on.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It don't have to start electronic. Physical key for that.
So obviously that, that needs to be addressed, but I, right now, we're talking about.
What we're talking about here is that the swipe.
Correct. Well, that's, I kind of got off.
I'm talking about physical keys to my office.
That definitely needs to be addressed, but that's kind of off. Definitely, can you guys communicate that?
Oh, yeah, well.
It's easy enough to kill a car, but you can't kill a physical key.
And it is comforting to know there are just two keys to enter the building here and we know where those are. Feel a little bit better.
Right.
Said you can't kill the key.
But I don't know, who's got keys to the annex?
I don't know. I mean, I, I get into the annex. I don't know if that is keyed or if it's swaled.
Again, I.
Who has keys to the jail?
I think our top priority is, is safety, but we also need to make sure that we're, we're, we're treating everybody the same. And we're not uh showing favoritism or for whatever reason. Um I mean, obviously, again, our, our number one uh priority is security, but uh. And it is common courtesy to just communicate when someone's being cut off. So I, I guess do we need to have a security meeting to make sure we're all on the same page? Because we haven't had one in a while.
There's one coming up. When do they do these quarterly?
Quarterly.
Yeah.
So we gotta be, we gotta be approaching that then. So we need to make uh a list of our concerns and.
Well, I'll get with Tom too, and we can even make up a list of who has access to where. And it probably would be good just to have our mind wrapped around the global issue of what we're talking about. Uh I do know at least in with one department, there was no idea who had access. You know, change the department head. We knew, so, you know, it'd be a good exercise for us to go through, but also to really uh, to say lockdown.
Should be minimal.
Lock down the key issue uh because um that's just not a, a very good uh position for us to be in.
Just re-minimal access.
It should be assigned access at least, and we should have a list so we know who has access to, you know, what doors uh. And then if a person uh separates from employment, we've got to collect that key. You know, the electronics is easy, we just shut it off. But if there's a physical key flowing around, we need to know where it is.
Tom can pull up, correct? Like who has access where? He can provide that information fairly quickly?
Electronic one, yes.
So what, what, what do we decide?
We're gonna go to a security meeting.
Okay, that's what we're gonna decide. Okay. Uh next, we have the airport manager. That's you, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, uh our airport meeting, our uh. We'd like to provide, the committee would like to provide healthcare to uh, to the manager or the manager. The city has Mesa too. We have a bigger plan of Mesa, so I said I would come to the commissioner's and ask. The cost, we can revert the cost back to the airport board. But we need to be the agent to sign them, to sign him on to our program.
So all we would do is, is, so the non-union, correct?
He is a non-union position. Yes, he is.
So why do they need our, our permission for this?
It's not our permission, it's to get on our plan.
Oh.
Any cost can go back to the, to charge back to the air, airport.
Airport budget's gonna pay for it, but we just need to.
You don't see an issue with that with the other unions or?
No, I. Our, our only issue will be with Mesa. And I think in their case, they're just gonna want us to, you know, they take an inventory of who's eligible. We could just simply add him to the list. So that's, that's just an administrative function. It's, it's easy.
He's the only full-time uh employee out there. We have hard times, but.
So does he work forty hour? Is that forty hours? Is that, okay, I don't know anything about the airport.
He's a huge asset.
Okay, I don't know. Just so there's no downfall to the, to this on our own.
No.
So do we need a resolution for this?
I would let you know, I, I think we do, but um maybe I, let's do it. We'll have it if we need it.
It's an expense. Even if we're getting, even if we're billing somebody else, we're gonna pay for it.
Which is what we're gonna do, we're gonna bill that.
Right. So I would say a resolution because we're gonna bill, we're, we're gonna have money involved. Doesn't hurt. Yeah.
So then I'm gonna, I'm gonna play your advocate, okay? Which is something that you'd say, I, again, I have no issue with this as all, but this is what you would come back with. So what happens next time when someone comes to us and wants it?
Well, if it's, if it's a department head, he's a department head.
Okay.
In a, in a entity that's co-owned by the county.
Okay.
I mean it. You know. It, it's a component unit. Yeah, I mean, even though we share it with the city. Um so if we had a entity that we shared with the township or a city or something like that. And had a manager for it, I, I don't see why not.
Okay, perfect.
You know, what was that? Did I?
I just wanted your part for just a few minutes. Um I had a question. Mary, I would like to introduce you. Uh would you be okay at the meeting doing that? Like, we haven't formally introduced you. I planned on it. I was very rude. I apologize at the first committee of the whole that you sat there with. So I was gonna do it at the meeting last week and then you were on vacation, so. How would you, would you be okay at the meeting on Thursday?
I don't have the speed, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. A brief introduction of yourself.
We'll hold you to public comment three minutes. You get three.
I don't want three, I want three seconds.
And, and are you guys okay with, with Mary sitting up there? You are gonna become one of us, so I just wanna make sure we're.
You get Tim on one side and you get Mary on the other side, right?
I'm good with that. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's bad of chair.
No, on a first-name basis. That was your first phone call.
I'm not very good with public speaking and, and obviously like in this setting, I can sit every year in the corner and say, sure, I'll be fine with it. But I have a bad history of being up in front of a room and having to speak in front of people. I'll talk to you about that on the side, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
A brief.
Yes, very brief at the meeting.
Very, very brief.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I don't, did I miss anything? Anybody want, anything else on there? Item five, public comment. This is the last public comment. Any subject matter uh goes three minutes. Sir, did you have something? I did not mean to cut you off earlier. Any, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
I'll have a public comment.
Okay.
Um last week at the board meeting, we had our student here. The resolution for Diana Sutherland made me quite emotional. So I was, I want to apologize for being so emotional.
There's no reason to apologize, Karen. Don't, you know what, you're gonna get me started just sitting here right now, so you can probably hear it in my voice, so.
Any other public comment? On the phone? Sir, did you have something?
I'm gonna talk to her after me.
Oh, okay. I thought with the kids, I thought that was fabulous.
It was fun.
Definitely do it again. I had my student reach back out to me. He writes articles for the Woodmore Prescott newspaper. And he had taken my business card with him and he had his contact at MSU that he works with to put his newspaper articles in. Emailing me his articles so I could read them.
Oh, how nice.
Yeah, reached out to me after the fact, so.
How nice.
Well, if he writes an article about you, then I would really like you to share it with us. Cause I'm not on the mailing list.
How refreshing. Any public comment on the phone? Can I have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry.
Uh Mary, uh once you get ahold of Brad about the Friday meeting, if. Let us all know for sure if it's gonna happen or not.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-one. I'm, we're adjourned.